So you did a medical interview?
Yes.
Yeah.
You see, we got much better control over what we're doing. There's a problem. We've got much better control of that. Always good. Always good.
I don't want to have that under.
No.
It's, I mean, I told Josh to have him consent.
I guess.
All right, at 6:00 PM, we'll get the meeting to order with, start with flag salute and invocation by Brian Rhodes.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in prayer thanking you for this day you blessed us with. And we thank you for this time of season, this month of November, that just causes us to reflect upon your goodness to us. Lord, we thank you for your provisions, your protection, Lord, your promises that you give to us. Just thank you for blessing us with another day. Lord, we ask that you would be with the meeting tonight. And, Lord, we pray for our mayor, for these commissioners as they make decisions. I just ask for your wisdom, Lord, and that they would make decisions that would be for the betterment of our community. Lord, be with our city manager, thank you for his work as well. And for the sacrifice of each of these for their time. And, Lord, just pray your blessings upon them. Lord, we also ask that you would be with those that protect our community, Lord, for our firefighters, our police. Lord, for EMS. And just pray, God, that you'd be with each one of them as well, and thank you for their sacrifice. Lord, we pray for our country today. Just ask, God, that you would give wisdom to our president as he leads. And then, Lord, I pray that you'd help us as citizens, that we would do our best to love one another, to make this community the best that it could be. Lord, we thank you for your love for us. Help us that we would show that love to those around us. We give you the honor and glory in Christ's name. Amen.
All right, under consent agenda, I need to add the certificate of appropriateness for the Samurai Hibachi and Sushi sign. Did everyone have a copy?
Yes.
Everybody's got a copy in front, so. All right. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Mark, did you, we talked earlier about E, item E. Was that changed on the?
No, it was not. It didn't get changed on here, so I think that should be discussed at this time, Commissioner.
Yeah. And that, what that is, is the request to pay Hecker Construction $72,095.94 for South National.
That's correct.
Did?
And that would be 80% of the project.
Right. What do you feel?
Well, I think you guys met out there on a Saturday, right, with Hecker Construction?
Yes, that's correct.
And what did the guy from Hecker say?
The gentleman said that yes, it was not acceptable. Yes, they would come back and they would do the work. They would mill and overlay. If I'm not mistaken, it's 700 feet. Does that sound right, Jason? Okay, sorry. 643 feet? I'm guessing now, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess by landmarks, it goes basically from the end of the project, which is 17th, the north side of that, to the driveway at the car wash.
What's the original bid?
But the total for the original bid was actually probably $45,000 because it had incorrect numbers for the tonnage and milling. But looking out there, he submitted the pay request with the major quantities on tonnage, and it was just a hair under 700 tons. And then the area matched up fine. So typically what happens when, when the project is open to traffic, which it is, even though part of it is inadequate and needs to be replaced, we go to the point where we issue a substantial completion certificate, which is technically 90% complete. So they could have billed for 90%, but I, talking to Mark, which I think he talked to commissioners, and he recommended that they submit for 80% due to, you know, knowing that they gotta come back. So that's how we ended up at 80%.
And, and no, Commissioner, I did not talk to all the commissioners, so that...
And why was it bumped up from, why was there such a substantial raise in like the tonnage and rock and things like that?
Basically, when it bid, it had the wrong numbers from the estimate. So even, basically from the time it bid to the time we issued recommendation for award, we had the numbers correct. And the total that we had was 705 tons. And like I said, they ended up at 700, which is the actual amount that is required. So I think budget-wise, we talked with Susan, I believe, and let you know what the actual amount's gonna be.
So, Mark, what's your recommendation? Is your recommendation to pay the $72,000?
So I, I had a conversation with Commissioner Allen. And what I said to him was, is I would suggest something between 50% or above because the work is not completed. Commissioner Allen can speak for himself, but I also want to make sure that there's enough money where they will come back to complete the job. So that was my suggestion of 20%.
Yeah, and that's my, that's, that's the reason I said 50%. Because for 50%, they're gonna come back. For 20%, there might be a decision made, you know, I just think we'll just leave it there. I mean, I'm not saying they would do that.
Right.
But is that a possibility, Jason?
Uh, for them, I wouldn't say that's, I mean, they're basically local. They're down in Pittsburgh, you know, and they want to do work. So for them to leave 20% on the table and just quit a job, they know that reflects poorly in the future for the whole region. So I don't anticipate that. And I can stay in communication with them and try to make sure that the priority for the spring season is that they get back here and get that knocked out as soon as they can so that it's not sitting any longer once the rainy season starts.
Do you know what percentage of the work needs to be redone?
I would honestly say it's not 20%. It's less than that based on, because it's only the top surface, because they did it in two layers. So it's only the top coat. So it's, it's definitely closer to 10% than 20% to rework. But it was reasonable to me, knowing they have to come back and then kind of helping ensure that, you know, agree to pay 80% was reasonable to me. Because, you know, they had to pay for the material and the time for what they did. So it's just one of those things, it's reasonable to do that.
Uh, Mark, I've, I've got a real problem. This commission authorized a project that included 415 tons of asphalt. And we end up paying for 700 tons of asphalt. Uh, this commission did not authorize 700 tons of asphalt. And I've got a real problem that with no change orders, with no direction from the commission, that we've added $26,000 to the project. And with, with, with no, and I, I know they, they, like you said, they laid it in two layers. And we, we paid, we, we asked for two inches of asphalt. And we've got three and a half or four inches. We didn't ask for three and a half to four. Nor do I expect to pay for three and a half or four. Uh, it's not what we asked for, it's not what we authorized. And if we made a mistake, we made a mistake. But I'd like to show me, I'd like to, you know, I'd like for you to show me the figures where it was estimated to be 400 ton and it ends up to be 700 tons.
Right, I can speak, and honestly, I think that was a mistake on my part, really. We had a number that was calculated incorrectly. And it is two inch overlay. So that volume for 700 tons is, is accurate for that area.
Well, with the, uh, the area, I'd like for you to go through that and, uh, and show me where that would add up to be 700 tons in lieu of, of, of 400, 400 tons. I, I just, I just can't believe that that type of an error is, is feasible. I don't think that's acceptable.
What if we table this, pull that out?
And we can, and I can provide you with calculations.
I'd like that. I think we're very confused right now how we took a bid for $57,000 and now we're wanting to pay them in partial at 72,000 and the bill's 90. There's numbers flying all over the place here that I don't understand, the city manager, Pete. So let's just go ahead and table this. Yeah, I'll make the motion to pull that out. Is that how I do it?
You're gonna make the motion to pull that out and accept the others as is?
Yes.
Yep. I'll second that.
And nothing against Hecker, I just want to get, you know, I want to figure this out.
So just to verify.
Ultimately, the, the way the specifications read for those types of projects, the, the pavement itself is a major quantity. So that's why, you know, at the end of the project, and I can produce a change order document if you need to, to show the difference from the original bid numbers to the final major quantity and then provide the calculations as well.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, and I just say before next meeting, if any commissioners have any questions, you get ahold of Mark, you get ahold of you.
And I'll email it to Mark.
And we try to have all the questions answered before the meeting.
Then I'll, then I'll be able to get them out to everybody.
Yep. And so just to be clear, the motion is Kevin made to accept the consent agenda minus the request to pay Hecker.
Removing item E and adding item G, which is the certificate of appropriateness. Kevin Allen.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Lindsay Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes. All right, public comments. Up first, Deb McCoy.
Good evening.
Deb, would you pull the mic up?
Good evening, is that better?
Yes, better.
After watching the last regular city commissioner meeting, I am here to raise questions on the importance of guidelines, policies, and procedures and the need to have a standard in which our city should follow. Guidelines provide direction for the appointed and elected officials. Policy is a term applied to a law, ordinance, or rule of law as directed to the welfare or prosperity of the state or community. And procedures is the mode of proceeding by which legal, legal right is enforced. I went to our city website to look up the city ordinance adopted last year regarding the Code of Ethics, Code of Procedures that was created by our previous city lawyer. And he charged the city, there was all kinds of numbers thrown out, but approximately $10,000 to $15,000. The information under the ordinance only showed the information of the Code of Ethics. The 15-page Code of Procedures was not to be found. I contacted the general attorney office and spoke with them and acted on their suggestions. And I also contacted the League of Kansas Municipalities, and this is what I learned. The League was established in 1910. They are located directly across the street from the Kansas Legislature in Topeka. 550 out of 650 cities in Kansas belong to the League. Annual dues are based on city valuations and population. And Fort Scott belongs to the League, and we pay around $3,500 for annual fees. The annual fees include two of these governing body handbooks, updated every two years and sent out on even years, so you should have received one this year. The city official manuals updated every two years and sent out on odd years. You should receive January through December a subscription of Kansas Government Journal. And you have access as a city to contact them at any time for direction. They offer training and guidance and keep cities informed of the information for best practices in city operation and in the city making decisions of the appointed and elected officials. Being, being a part of the League of Kansas is a win-win for city governments. So here's my question. Why did we have to pay our previous city attorney approximately $15,000 to put together a 25-page handout of Code of Ethics and Code of Procedures for the Commission of the City of Fort Scott, Kansas? Was this a cut-and-paste product that left out a lot of important information? This 25-page handout was passed under the city ordinance number 3563 on July 16, 20. And the seven-page Code of Ethics, this is the ordinance, is present on the website, but the 15-page Code of Procedures was not to be found. Was it intended to be a part of the ordinance? The interesting notation on the Code of Procedures provided by our previous city attorney was the preface. Number one, the rules set out on this Code of Procedure are based upon the simple rule of parliamentary procedure for the 21st century by Dave Rosenberg. This is the pamphlet. And Code of Procedures for Kansas cities, Kansas cities, published by the League of Municipalities. In talking to the League, it was pointed out to me that they do have a 15-page pamphlet of Code of Procedures available for the price of $15 and is highly recommended by the League to adopt as a city ordinance. This, this League also provides what the ordinance form, a form that talks about the ordinance. And all you have to do is put the number in and sign it. So why did we not utilize our League of Kansas resources that we pay annual dues to? They have the most valuable and updated information that is prescribed by state law and in bylaws adopted by the voting delegates of its member cities. We would have saved the city thousands of dollars. Additional books that could have been ordered from the League of Municipality at a much cheaper rate and would have provided more effective information guidelines for our appointed and elected officials. We have Hand for Effective Meetings, Handbook for Effective Meetings. We have a guide to the Kansas Open Meeting Act. Those two books alone are only $130. We as citizens can order any of these reference books, but we do not get the discount rate that the members of the League get. Why did we try to reinvent the wheel when the information that was needed should have been at your fingertips? Why do we not acknowledge the League of Kansas when its very mission is, quote, "to unify, strengthen, and advocate for the interest of Kansas municipalities, to advance the general welfare and promote the quality of life of the people who live within our cities"? I have witnessed indiscretions and disregard of the League's governing body handbook by each and every one of you sitting at the table. It is disheartening to see the disregard of the rules of law and order, especially after we paid approximately $15,000 for a 24-page booklet when we clearly had the most recent standards of guidelines that are updated and legislatively, legislatively monitored for a mere annual fee of $3,500. The recommended books from the League are an easy and very informative read. It's important that we have guidelines and protocols and procedures so that all involved know what is expected of them, whether elected or appointed. I would also like to remind you that we voted you into office to represent the needs of our city and to be stewards of the people, both monetarily and environmentally. And we also expect that both elected and appointed officials respect and follow the rule of law and order. After all, without the taxpayer, taxpayer, where would our city be? And without the city, where would you be? I'm gonna hand you a list of all the books that you can get from the Kansas League. And it, it has everything from uniform to zoning to annexing at your fingertips. And they're not costly works. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
Rob Harrington.
Good evening. Um, I am just coming today to put, on a public comment to speak a little bit. Uh, in case you didn't happen to watch the stream this afternoon at the county level, wanted to come to the city level as well and talk about today. So today, I feel that it's a great day to be here in Bourbon County, to be a Fort Scotian, to be a Bourbon Canyon. Uh, because if, if you didn't hear today, Noble Health made the announcement that they will be moving forward with the process to, hopefully, in the near future, be able, be able to open or reopen a hospital here in Fort Scott. Uh, it was a great day. And so we're excited to be working with them again. There's a couple more phases that we'll be going through to talk about some construction things and some, and labor data as well. Uh, but it was a good day today when they were able to say that, uh, through the survey and through some of the data that they had, that this commission and the county commission was able to see. Um, they felt that it was, uh, uh, felt that it was proper to say that they will be continuing the efforts and moving on to the next phases, so. A good day today. So thank you very much to all that was involved. Uh, we will continue to work on this. Uh, like I said, today at the county commission, uh, there's still a lot of work to do. Nothing is, we're not, we're not cutting a ribbon or anything today or shooting off fireworks, but we are saying that, um, we are moving forward and that there is still a great hope that we will be able to, uh, once again, have a hospital here in Fort Scott, so.
But do you think today was a good day, is the question?
Today, yeah, I think today was, you know what? Today was an amazing day, Sketch, because I got to see.
The sandwiches were pretty good.
Sandwiches were good. They were good. Well, Marsh's Deli or, yeah, Marsh's Deli today.
No, it was good. I mean, obviously, we can't, you know, talk a lot about it, but it was all good stuff and, and pretty positive, so. Don't get hurt for a little bit longer. It sounds like maybe we got some positive news coming on the horizon.
Yeah, I think, I think by next year, uh, January, February, they'll be doing their public town halls and talking to, to everyone. But, and just, just so, I, I just want to be clear on why today. And then the next couple of meetings, we're still behind closed doors with the commission. It's because there's some information in that data that we received that contains private businesses' financial information. And so that's something we don't feel that should be distributed out to the public, especially with it being businesses outside of, of Noble Health. So, uh, we really wanted to make sure their, their, respect their privacy as well while we were taking and looking at this data. So with that being said, we'll move forward and, uh, looking forward to the next phase, uh, which we'll really get into the weeds and talk about construction costs and things like that.
You did great, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
And if the commission doesn't mind why Rob's here, I'm gonna call for a quick executive session with Rob. Everyone's good with that. So I move the city commission recess into executive session for the purpose of financial affairs of trade secrets of corporations pursuant to 754319B4. In the executive session, be the five commissioners, the city manager, the city attorney, Susan, and, uh, Rob. Um, open meeting will resume in 10 minutes at 6:34 in the commission room. All right, I move the city comes back into open session.
Second. Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. All right, old business, consideration of bids, of demolition, of structures.
I probably need to be loud, right?
Probably need to leave the room.
Diane?
Yeah. Okay, get out. Get out for Bob.
Yeah, this was on the agenda a few times ago. Waiting to hear back from the county. And I think at the county city meeting, they said if we chose to, the dump fees, that they could just bill us. And then either if we work on agreement, take it off that or charge us. So I don't know if that affects anyone's decision on which way to go or not. So I guess with that, first one, 611, south ransom.
So I'm sorry, Josh, just for clarity, so we're, we are bidding these based on dump fees included or not included?
Say whatever you want to do. I'm just saying the county, there's agreement in the works with the county to possibly join up at the landfill and have dump fees for free. And they said they're willing to just charge it to us until that happens.
If we were able to work out an agreement or when we're able to put in writing and work out an agreement for the dump fee, dump fees being waived. Yes, agreement. That's what we're waiting on. Does that make sense, Randy?
Yeah, but we, we need to know because.
We would be, we would be waiving or we'd be accepting these without dump fees.
Okay. And I don't know if that makes a difference in who got all the bids or the distribution number or not. That's my only concern is that we need to know which way we're doing it so we know which bid.
Yes. I actually have some information that came to me, and I don't know, I hate for you to table this again, but they are looking at this property that potentially could have been an old dump for the city. And if that's the case, then we may not be able to dump there. They are working with KDHE to see if that can still handle the CND. So I don't know if that changes your conversation, but I, I know there's some more research that needs to be completed.
Do you have a timeframe, did they say?
Eric, I talked to him right before this meeting, and he said he has a meeting with them this week. So I would assume by your next meeting, you should have clear answers.
I think by then, if it's by then, then I would probably make a motion to table them until the next meeting. So.
I'll, I'll second that because I think it may, it may make a difference in fairness of the bid.
Is it with that being said, Randy, does this need to, I mean, do we need to look at going back out for bid again? Is that what you're saying?
No, no.
Okay.
Again, I, I don't know who got which bid based on with or without fees. And so it, it makes it, I think it makes, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
If you bid it one way, somebody's going to get it. If you bid it the other way, somebody else is going to get it.
Absolutely. Second? Oh, Randy did. Okay. Sorry. Jumped again.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. All right, up next, under appearances is Shane Wood.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name's Shane Wood. I'm on the lake board, and I also head up the Smart Growth and Planning Committee. We've been asked to come here tonight to, well, first of all, we want to thank you, Nancy Mays. And thank you guys for taking our suggestions, opinions on how to improve the lake for everybody. We have put a map up on the wall over there. I'd be happy to go over there. Will this thing travel with me?
Yes.
I'm just here to review what our committee thought would be some good ideas to start reinvesting in the lake and making improvements to the lake. We know there's an east camp, an east public area, there's a west public area. But we thought for phase one, the best thing to focus on would be the west area, which is over there on the map. And I'll walk over there. I did bring, and I don't know how many to bring, but I brought four or five here, handouts of the items I'm going to go over, so you can tell what I'm talking about. And hopefully I can do it here. And again, these are just our suggestions. Our understanding is the city is going to take these suggestions, and you guys will evaluate if they're good ideas, bad ideas, how you want to change them, throw them in the trash, whatever. And then if, if you like them, it was our understanding at our last lake board meeting that Doug Gunn would start working on getting numbers put together for the cost of these items. And then we on the subcommittee, as well as the lake board, would be happy to assist and help in any way we can. Okay? So as I said, the focus would be the west area, public area right now. I know this is kind of hard to read, but this is your loading ramp. The first thing would be the shelter house, grade this area. We went out there and looked at it. It's got some runoff issues. Regrade this area, put a new roof on it, paint the exterior and interior. It'd be nice to get some working bathrooms, get some lighting, security cameras. Doug had some good insight on security cameras because we feel with these improvements, it's going to be more important to monitor and patrol this area. So Doug's done some research on some, some cameras. The level, the primitive camping area, if you will, and get this cleaned up. Over here, we thought would be a good area to put some phase one RV pads, which would be utilities, water, power, and some, some areas, obviously, to the level we kicked around. Do we spend the money on concrete? Do we do something that's cheaper like an AB3 or gravel? You know, we don't pretend to be the experts. We threw out some different ideas. A dump station for those RVs. We thought this would be a good area to do a future phase if these RV sites went well. You could expand that over here. What else was in phase one? And then these purple areas are just some areas just to clean up and improve the current parking areas. So that when you're out there, whether you're at the beach, whether you're camping, whatever, you got somewhere to park cars and get out of the road where people can easily get through here. Future phase, we thought necessary to be cool. And again, this is down the road, like for a playground area, some fire pits. People brought up the idea of having, adding on to the shelter house or having a shower house somewhere so the people are camping. On either side, they could come and clean up, shower and all that, which is pretty common. And then future phases, again, somebody's probably better explain it, but this area tends to get clogged up with trucks, trailers, et cetera, when people are putting boats in. And this is actually an overflow, correct?
Yeah, that's a, that's a secondary overflow to help if the spillway can't keep up.
Yeah. So the thought was up here, this is a pretty nice area that's already really level, that we could create an area to where you could put your trailers, et cetera, once you've unloaded your boats and get them out of the way of this area here, because this tends to be a real bottleneck out there. And then a really, really long-term thing would be to cup, put a couple of public slips here and potentially even a marina. And I know this is way down the road, but for people that do bring their boats here, that don't have residence, they could actually park their boat. Or if they're camping and they bring their RV in their boat, we've got three or four cheap slips that they could put their boat and leave them out overnight. That's our long-term vision for the west side. I think I cut it, I covered it all. I'm trying to be quick because I know you guys got a long night.
Shane, one of the things we talked about too was that you said dump station. And I went over there the other day, and we actually have sewer that runs right by that area.
Up here?
Yep, right there, right there alongside. There was a, there was a lid there. So that'll be pretty easily, you know, taken care of. It's a dump station right there. And I don't think, I mean, you were, you explained to us at the lake meeting also about the starting out with 10 pads or five, whatever it was.
I mean, again, not knowing the cost of them. I think one of our big concerns was investing this money to clean these areas up. But again, there's a lot of future costs that are going to come with that because you're going to have to patrol the area, clean the area, et cetera. So we thought we'll start with five and just see kind of where they come out numbers wise. So that there remains money in there to help cover those maintenance costs.
And Doug's going to be working on that, getting us?
I don't think Doug's working on it yet. I think my goal is to come here and present it to you guys, and you guys decide what you want to do.
Okay, okay. Well, I know he said he'd been talking with you, so I didn't know if you'd had, I didn't know whether we'd given you direction, but obviously we have not.
Have you looked over their first phase, Doug? So how long do you think it would take you to come back with some cost estimates? So you think by next meeting, if we ask you to come back, can you have some of it possibly come back with?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's great. And I'd even be willing to help you, Doug, if you needed, you know, some, some advice on, I mean, not that I have the best advice, but I've been out there a lot. So.
And I think Frank, I need to mention probably that Doug was at the meeting, but also Frank Halsey was there. And again, Frank said he'd help in any way he can. There's a lot of people on our subcommittee that have construction experience and background, development backgrounds, you know, we're willing to help in any way we can.
One of the things I did not hear you mention that we've talked about before is the lack of public docks. You know, we have, I believe, three public docks at this time. And there would be two at the loading ramp and then one over at the swim area. I would like to possibly, it's up to you guys, but I would like to get cost estimates on what, what docks cost now also. Because there was, there was a lot more at one time docks out there. There was docks several along the, Nancy, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there would have been at least one more on the west side of the lake, about three quarters way down. There would always been a dock right there. Yep. One, one on the east side, clear at the end, is down there, but it's dilapidated, fell apart. Right? But it, I mean, it could stand to have an update. You know, so I think there's several things. There's no, there's not even a dock on Scortino side. There's no way to get down to the water. You cannot access the waters for that. So I think that's something that it's, again, up to you guys, but we probably should shop some dock prices and see, you know, what a standard those 20 by 20 docks or whatever they are stamped out of, they're all.
I don't think we need a motion. I think Doug can come back. And if he could price docks as well over there. So. And then Diane, could you put that on next meeting?
So Doug, as you do this, can you divide it into repair and replace what we currently have and then a new expanded? And then I assume you will put in estimates for the ongoing maintenance, because we can only use the sale of the lots for single-use episodic payments. Can't be used for ongoing care and maintenance. So that's, that's an important part of the decision.
Yeah, I watched some of the meeting. I think Shane and them were good at, the things you guys presented were, would offset some of those costs, like the, the camping pads and everything. So.
Yeah, and we talked about fees for the boat permit fees, camping fees, whether it be the primitive camping or the RV camping, and coming up with a tiered fee structure. I think, you know, we thought if, if you're a lake owner or a city resident, would be a cheaper fee than if you're coming from out of town and you're, and you're pulling your RV in here and you're going to be for three or four days, you know, charging them a higher fee, again, to get some reoccurring revenue.
Sure. That should be probably looking to that as far as boat permits also.
Shane, thanks for your effort.
Yep, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, up next, public hearing. So need a motion to open.
May I open the public hearing?
This is for the performance, fire truck approval of grant, closeout forms. I'll second it.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Open the public hearing.
Oh, absolutely.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Uh, yes.
Good evening. We are here to close out grant number 20 PF005. It was for the acquisition of a new fully-equipped NFPA-compliant 100-foot platform ladder truck. The truck is housed at the main fire station located at 1604 South National and will service the entire city of Fort Scott. And the beneficiaries will be those households located within the city limits. I can read all of the description that you want me to, but. I can read all of the description if you want me to, but.
Does anybody have?
Could you speak into the mic? Yeah, I'm having a tough time hearing you.
I'm sorry. We're closing out grant twenty PF zero-zero-five for the fire truck. Hundred-foot platform ladder truck housed at sixteen-oh-four South Lincoln, or sorry, South National.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns on that?
So, we just need a motion to move for completion? So move.
There, there's several forms that the mayor will need to sign, and Diane will need to sign.
And that we okay the mayor to sign all, all the appropriate forms?
Yeah. Mayor, if there's no other questions or concerns, I would close the public hearing.
Motion, second.
Kevin Allen? Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Josh Jones, sorry.
You wanna try that again, Randy?
Now my motion stands. Okay, so move whatever we move.
I'm free for the mayor to sign all pertinent documentation.
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
I move to approve the invoice for S E K R P C.
Second.
And this is just for, uh, Susan, the two thousand is for?
I, I didn't catch the second. I got Lindsay, oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Pete Allen?
Oh, is that Randy?
Whoops, Pete? We're voting to approve the invoice to Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission.
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
All right, on the new business. Uh, number one, consideration, a resolution establishing a date for a public hearing for, uh, NRP. KSA twelve-dash-seventeen.
Mayor, this is to renew our?
Your mic's on, on.
Mayor Rob was gonna perform this, but he has, uh, other commitments this evening that he needed to attend to, so on his behalf, this is to, uh, uh, renew and to reestablish, uh, our process for the neighborhood revitalization. That's why it's KSA twelve-dash-seventeen-one-forty-four. So I would ask that you, uh, vote in favor of this.
This is basically us redoing what we've had before previously?
That's correct.
Make the motion to approve, uh, this resolution?
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. All right, B.
Land Bank discussion. Uh, the Land Bank is asking if this commission would waive the assessment fees for properties to be acquired into the Land Bank.
And so the question is, Bob, that's the legal, Legati has to waive them, and then the Land Bank can take them in?
Yes.
And not the other way around? They can't take them and then waive them?
I guess we could take them, pay ourselves.
So what's the motion? What, what?
Waive the assessment?
I'm, I'm asking.
The motion would be, I'm asking you if you would consider making a motion to waive the assessment fees on properties to be taken into possession by the Land Bank.
I make the motion?
I, I want clarity, and I'm sorry about that. So, the properties to be sold at, at the land, land sale, what's the word, the tax sale? And then, uh, the properties that are sold or not sold, they're all, we're gonna do this on all the properties going to the tax sale, or just the properties that the Land Bank is anticipating?
Land Bank.
Just the properties that the Land Bank would acqui, be acquiring, not all the properties at the tax sale?
Just, I'm sorry, just one clarity.
No, I'm glad you did, Commissioner.
Good question. Is there a second?
Yep. No, no, there is not yet.
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
I'm staying.
Josh Jones?
Yes. Do we need to make a motion to go up, um, for letters of interest for the new Land Bank? Do we need a vote on?
Land Bank Board?
Yeah, reorganized. Do we need a vote on that here?
Or just instruct me or Diane to do such?
Send out letters of interest. And I think there'd be four openings, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the requirements of the letters of interest, Mark?
I don't think, I don't think there was.
Citizens of Port Scott, from the county?
So we're looking for actually people in four different areas. One, one would be in the developmental area, meaning property, real estate development. One would be a Realtor. Th, these are suggestions and/or recommendations by the Land Bank. Uh, the third one would be, we already have a banker, so we, help me here, anybody? An attorney, so we thought it'd be really important to have legal representation there. And then, the fourth one is just a general, uh, great citizen who has an interest to be on this board. To want to?
I'm sorry, and Bob, you can probably, a, attorney on the board can't really give legal, I mean, it's kinda just general legal advice. Wouldn't be advice.
Yeah, I mean, you're advising the board, yes, but the board, you'll.
Uh, Bob, your mic's on, on.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
An attorney on the board could obviously give advice if requested. And these are just suggestions. In other words, you might not end up with anybody that's interested, that's not a Realtor. You may have eight, eight Realtors, two bankers that are interested. So you're, you're gonna end up having to take kinda what you get.
Is there any requirements? I mean, you gotta be city?
That, that, and, uh, Diane can tell you better than I. It's a city board, so, uh, oftentimes, there is one non-city representative that can be allowed to be on there.
However, you set it up. Yep.
I think we need to do that. Needs to be an at-large.
At-large?
Yeah.
Have it, have that person be the county resident?
Well, there is a county.
Oh, yes. There's a county commissioner on there, yes. And there is a county representative who's the treasurer. Who's also a banker. But, I mean, you're just getting advice. You're not, you're not paying for this free advice. So they're not, if, if it was a lawyer or banker or a developmental executive, they're just giving you their opinion.
Question also, um, one of the big pieces for the Land Bank that was brought up is the funding for the Land Bank to be able to get started to facilitate demolitions or to facilitate anything along those lines, and where those fees are gonna be assessed to, which I believe that has to be assessed to the Land Bank, not to the city, if they take that property. So, has that discussion happened, and admittedly, was late to the Land Bank meetings?
That was brought up at the Land Bank meeting, and there was a request, uh, to the land, there was a suggestion to the Land Bank, for the Land Bank to request to the city funding. And, uh, and the suggestion was?
Yeah, from the sale of the?
From the sale of the, uh, property, the first doors building in the industrial park?
Which I also believe some of these properties we come in will generate a little bit of revenue, hopefully.
Yes.
Right, but we need startup.
We, we need fees, funds to start up. There will be costs. So, um, you know, I would like to see a minimum or a maximum. Minimum of, I like to say first, a maximum of fifty thousand and a minimum of twenty-five thousand. So that would be my request, and I'm not on the Land Bank Board, but that was the message that I received.
Thank you. So is that a, um, is that a motion that the commission would have to make, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
It might be something good for the city-county meeting, because I know Jim at the meeting said something about possibly the county as well stepping up, so. I think it'd be something good to maybe have a next?
Put on the agenda for that meeting?
Please. Mark's making?
There will be an agenda for that meeting, so. That's coming up later.
I appreciate that.
All right, moving on. C, consideration of change order to, um, the clarifier number one painting.
Yes, Michael, would you please? Thank you.
This is the ongoing rehab for the clarifier. The water treatment plant. So they've been working on that for?
About a month and a half.
Over twenty, over twenty days now, of actual workdays. And the first one is very simply some metal that was corroded badly enough that we had to do some welding on that. It was corroded to the point that it couldn't just simply be sandblasted and painted. And so, a couple of spots that could not be seen, um, prior to the job being bid out. And then the second, the second change order is just a supply chain issue. So the plant, the paint that the engineer specified is not available due to supply chain issues. So, we found a paint that is of superior, uh, quality to that which was specified, will, which will enable us to keep the job going and get the job done. Unfortunately, it's gonna cost a little bit more. So, that's it.
So is that covering C and D? Because it's like, good news, bad news. There's a decrease and an increase, so it kinda offsets. Oh, there's a new en, agenda?
Yep.
Yes.
These are both increases.
They're both increases.
It's in front of you.
So, I guess I was looking at the wrong agenda.
Okay, so they're both increases?
Yes.
That's correct.
C is an increase of eighteen-fifty, and D, and D is an increase of twenty-one-seventy-five.
Okay, um, yeah, and I know, I mean, for a fact that it's hard to get a hold of paint right now, you know, from talking to house builders to anybody, paint is oddly enough, hard to come up with, so. And the other thing is, I mean, it's, some of those are unforeseen. I know when you get in there, like you were talking about the sandblasting thing, so, but.
Then a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to go ahead and prove this.
Can we prove them both at one time?
Yes.
You're comfortable with it?
Oh, yes. And it's, this is by recommendation of the engineer. He's reviewed everything.
Second.
Thank you.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols? Josh Jones?
Yes. E, consideration of sewer, sewer service agreement.
Um, this is an agreement that we've been working on with the county, um, for quite some time. It's the sewer district agreement with the lake, and I just wanna bring your attention to a couple of areas, uh, that have changed. Um, one is under, it's on page two, under charge and billing for sewage treatment. Um, in the past, that, that invoice would go out the fifteenth of each month, but in order to get it in line with other city billings, we are going to change that to the twenty-second of each month, and the lake advisory board is, uh, very, is aware that we are making that change. And so that will be effective the first billing cycle in January.
Just a difference in when they're getting the bills?
Yeah, yeah, so there'll have to be a small proration, um, in that first billing cycle, but, that everybody felt like that that was reasonable, and part of that is so that we can take advantage of, um, our bulk mailing. Otherwise, we have to pay extra because we don't have enough bills that are generated during that time. The other section that is new is under, it's on page four, non-residential users. And I'll read this part to you. It says, "Any commercial or industrial user adding on to the system will be required to meter the amount of sewage being discharged in the district sewer system. Charges will be based on the monthly sewage discharge into the system using the city's current residential rate times one and a half." And, um, this is, we do the same type of thing for, uh, St. Martin's, except for they do not pay the time and a half. They pay, we, we monitor the number of hours on their lift station, and then we convert that into gallons used. There's a, there's a formula that you can use, and so that's how we are charging them. And then, anyone adding sewer service in the district with the proper approval will be required to pay a connection fee of two thousand dollars. In the past, it was six thousand. And where that number comes from is after doing a lot of research and discussing this with a, with the, um, past, past lake advisory board members, um, in the beginning, when the district was created, each person had to have a thousand dollars for a lot buy-in. And so we feel like that that is still fair to charge that thousand dollars. And then, the, there's eight hundred and fifty dollars that, um, in labor and saddle hookup that the city of Port Scott generally does, um, to hook on to the sewer system, and then we always require a hundred and fifty dollar deposit. So that's the breakdown of how that two thousand dollars was, uh, arrived at.
Tell, okay, can I stop you?
Uh huh.
The thousand dollar, what was the first thousand dollars you said?
It was a lot buy-in.
And you're telling me every lake resident paid that before?
Yes, yeah, when the sewer district was created.
Okay.
And then, um, eight hundred and fifty dollars was for?
Yeah, I heard you say that, yeah.
So, basically, those dollars, um, there was a question of whether or not those dollars would pay the debt service, and that would be at the district's discretion. And so those funds will go set in a special, um, fund that's already been set up, um, for anybody new within the district. So when I say that, that's within the district, so, and the district is just lake properties, right around the lake. Um, we did find, finally, um, the description of what is the district. Um, that district can be expanded. Um, but we also wanted to make sure that we called out if there's any commercial or industrial use because of the amount of sewage that could be going into the system, so. You know, I'm sure there'll be changes that need to be made to this over time, but for right now, in the current, um, climate, this is what we feel like is fair.
And you said people outside the district will pay one and a half times, kinda like the water, if, if a non-resident gets city water?
We also do that for sewer.
Right.
Yeah.
There was, you know, there's been discussion of that before. We still have people outside the city limits that have city water.
Have city water meters. Yes. And, one thing I will note is there are two individuals that before this agreement was even brought into place, um, that we feel should be grandfathered, and they were told that they would not have a hookup fee, and so we feel like we need to honor that with those two individuals, um, because this was just something that slipped through the cracks, and, um, they were originally told, and they've already started developing their property. And so, I, I would rather, oh, that was previous administration, and I would rather not say who the developers are. I mean, I don't think that's fair to them.
But we have proof where it was told to them?
Yes.
Yeah, there's minutes of the meetings and stuff like that. We researched it a little bit. Um, one of the things, Susan, I wanna talk about that, um, and I know we haven't got that in there, and I brought it up at meetings before, and I think it needs to be looked into and, looked at cost-wise and how it can be brought back. When the original contract was made for this sewer to be put in the lake, the, these lift pumps, um, I'm, you know, I've got places at the lake, and these lift pumps go out. And we send them in to have them repaired, and it's very expensive to have them repaired. Some residents say, "Well, I don't wanna join in on anything because my sewer pumps never screwed up." And some places, because of the fall of the ground evidently, that's, they go out yearly, and it's a big expense to people. In talking to Stoughton, Stoughton's is in charge of changing out the pumps. In talking to them, like, they have the same type of system in Farlington, at the lake there, and the town of Farlington also runs off of sewage pumps. And they have a, basically, an insurance program that, that replaces their pumps. That way, nobody has to fret of spending a thousand dollars every, every year, or every other year, what have you, to replace these pumps. And a lot of people are experiencing problems out there. So I would like to look into how we, through this district, you know, thi, this is something we should have properly addressed day one, when they talked about putting it in, to where now we don't have people that have to go around the system, and, oh, you know, I mean, there's, I was trying to think of another example besides sewer, but, but that should be something that's controlled, uh, with the payment plan.
I don't know, maybe something, instead of making mandatory, it could be an optional, like you said, insurance. If you want to, you can buy insurance for that, and that way, it's optional for residents out there. I mean, that's, I don't know if we would administer it, or if they can set up an administer program.
I don't know either, but.
The district would not be able to set that up, because that's why, that's why the city is running it, because they do not have a utility billing system.
I'm just saying somehow the city of Farlington has this same type of system, and they administer it somehow, because in, through talking to Stoughton's, it's a matter of just getting a phone call, they go replace it, and then the, that co-op or whatever pays for it.
I can reach out to the city of Farlington for you if you'd like.
I'd, I'd appreciate that.
And the county accepted this today?
Yes.
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Are you prepared for this? Cause I asked you yesterday. So, so, uh, as I read through the agreement, uh, what I was looking at was the monthly, uh, base rate. That, I'm not sure I completely understand how it's calculated, but, uh, a couple of things to me. We're getting ready in the next section to increase our standard monthly base rate for city residents at twenty-three forty-seven. This talks about fifteen seventy-seven and then new user average numbers that you can tell me about in a minute. And then the other issue that I would raise, and I don't have a right or wrong answer, but we're also going to charge everyone in town a ten dollar a month, fee or, I, I guess, uh, and, and so, I understand there's an argument about that, that, well, uh, we're using, people in town are using more lines, but, this is my perception, is that the sewer that's flowing from the lake is also coming through our major lines. And so if we break down here, even in the lines, it gets to be an issue. Certainly, we've been doing a lot of rehab on, on the facilities, and so, I, I think, we, we need to be sure that we are treating everybody in a like fashion. There may be reasons for the difference or, and so I'm throwing that out for you to describe that to us and the rest of the group to join in and give an opinion if they want.
Sure. In, um, section five of the agreement, it says increase in treatment rates. And it says after the first year of operation, the city may increase the amount of charge for sanitary sewage treatment. And that any future increases in said rates for the district shall be based on a demonstrated increase in the cost of the treatment. And so basically, as the rates increase for your residential users, um, it will also increase for the, um, district. So they'll basically be paying the same amount as, um, the district. However, we do have to send them a notice, and so that's why it's important that after, as rates are, are considered, that we do it early enough that we can get the, um, information to the district, letting them know that the raise, their rates will be raised.
So wait, let me clarify that. So are you telling me we're gonna, we are going to raise their rate to twenty-three forty-seven, the base rate?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's, it's already raised past the fifteen seventy-seven. They're, they're on our current rate structure now.
Okay.
Um, as far as, um, how their information is calculated, because we do not provide the water service, which is what your sewer rates are based on, um, rural water actually provides their service, and we do not have access to those records. Um, we do it on the average, um, of new users within the city limits. So every year, at the beginning of the year, we establish a, um, annual average. And that annual average is, is applied to any new resident in the city of Fort Scott. And so the same thing applies here. They get that same rate, um, because we don't have the statistical data to apply to them. So really, they're kinda getting the bargain if they live there all year long, because we don't have anything to, um, to, to bump their data up against. Um, but as far as new users, um, so anybody that might sign on, we don't have their history either, so we do an annual average of the entire system to, to identify what their rate's going to be.
So, so in saying that, I'm trying to keep everything together here, but you, you, you're talking about an average, you're taking an average off of it. And there's gonna be, I, I think it's a win-win out there because there's a lot of homes that get used three months a year.
Yeah.
And they never come back and see them for nine months. There's lots out there that I know personally, people that own, that have never had an ounce of sewage ran through it or water. Um, and they pay the same rate every month. Mine, personally, never had anything through it, so I think it's a win-win when it comes to averaging out, cause those would be zero.
For us, but maybe not for the customer.
No, for the homeowner, it's terrible. It's terrible, man. Trust me. I'm writing the check every week or a month.
But there may be some that use more that we're not capturing. So that's just, you know, it's a.
I'll pick that up.
Yeah, it's a give and take, so.
And, and so, but as I understand, then, the, their, their base rate out there is probably more than twenty-three forty-seven because it's the average.
Yes, it's just a little bit above the twenty-three forty-seven.
All right. So then the ten dollar fee, I don't know what the rest of the commission.
So, that's, that would be a conversation, a policy decision, um, of whether or not that ten dollar fee that, that, and maybe you come back to that. Um, or, um, I think that needs to be addressed when we do the sewer rate increase conversation. So, if you're okay with how this stands today, um, I would ask that you approve the new agreement.
I'm, I'm, I'll move to approve it, uh, and, and again, I, I will ask you to put it on your radar to talk about the ten dollars.
I will, I will, I'll address it.
Second.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. All right, consideration of water rate increase.
Um, during our budget work sessions, we discussed, uh, water rate increases, and the budget was actually built on a three percent increase. Um, and so that is what is before you deny on the water rates. Um, one thing that I will say that is new, and, um, I felt like it was received positively during the meetings when, um, Peter Earls talked about it, is to automatically put in, um, language that shows that there will be a three percent increase every year effective January one. So you don't have to keep bringing these back. It's just, it's just a policy that that's what you will do because the cost of, um, goods going up.
Did you say this was a three percent increase?
Yes. Oh, sorry, it's a five percent on this one. And then a three percent going forward.
I know we had a lot of talks about the rate structure.
And I didn't ever feel, I didn't get a feeling that that was where we wanted to head at that moment. Now, if you want us to bring something back that shows a rate structure that charges differently based on the size of meter you have, um, I'd be more than willing to do that. But we're ru-, I mean, we're kinda running out of time, so.
I think we talked about on that that it would hurt some businesses, is that right?
It would.
So, yeah, I don't think that's a, a great plan, but, um.
I can tell you that I built the budget just on a straight five percent increase. I didn't do anything else with the, with the rates.
And I think that, like we said at the, when we were talking about the rate increase, the reason we have to is because we haven't done it steadily for so many years, right? There were some years we didn't increase it, didn't increase it.
Well, you have the river intake, um, system that came on, um, you're gonna have the full expense in that of next year. So that's, that's the biggest reason why you're doing a five percent this year, and then every year after, you can do the three percent.
I would ask for one change for the, each seven hundred and fifty gallons usage thereafter. Instead of four twenty-seven, be raised to four forty-seven.
Okay. Is there a reason for that?
I ju-, I compared it to a lot of other towns and the declining rate structure, and that one is just a huge difference than every other town compared to. I mean, the discount we're given for that, um, to me, the, the drop in difference, and just looking at that and the drop after just seems substantial to me, so, I mean, that's just an ask.
So for bigger water users, it'll be an extra twenty cents?
And it's just on the, over the seventy-five thousand gallons, yeah. It'd be seven hundred and fifty gallons, every seven hundred and fifty gallons would be twenty.
Without doing ca-, running back into your calculations, I can't tell you how that, I mean, I can't imagine that it's gonna break them. Not like what we were talking.
It's just another five percent over what.
Yeah.
But, that would be my motion to accept this, except for the change of the four forty-seven on the free, on the last line instead of the four twenty-seven.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yeah.
Josh Jones.
Yes. Next, consideration of sewer rate increase.
Um, the sewer rate increase, we had discussed a three percent increase, and that was what was budgeted, as well as a ten dollar infrastructure reconstruction fee, um, to be assessed each month. And so, um, and then also the built-in three percent thereafter. So, um, we didn't really talk about any other restructuring at our budget meetings.
And this is why I raised the issue about should the lake people have ten dollars?
Yes, the lake, yes. And so the question becomes, um, should the lake residents also pay this ten dollar assessment fee? Um, and I can tell you, over the next few years, some of your biggest, um, expenses are going to be at your actual wastewater plant. And so, according to the agreement, that would be a logical, um, assessment. There could be, um, you know, they, their lines run from the district to the industrial park where there's a lift station, and then it's all carried all the way back to the, um, uh, plant. And so, you know, it's, it's at least half of your town.
And how much is the sewer at the lake right now?
Um, it's your base, so it's about that twenty, about twenty-three dollars a month.
Twenty-three dollars plus paying off the.
The debt service.
Yeah.
Which is twenty-two dollars approximately. Which is protect, protecting your water source, remember.
I'm just trying to figure my monthly bills.
Well, there's folks, I mean, it just seems to me like, like we're not being fair to the ci-, to the people living in the, in town if we don't assess our other users the same way. Uh, that's just my gut feeling. I'm sure I'm gonna make a lot of people at the lake unhappy that I've said that, including the guy I play golf with, but, uh, that's, that's okay.
Well, is that, there again, that's something that's brought up. I mean, it's the first we've discussed it. Do you table that part, tell you? I mean, we haven't, we've never discussed that. And I hate to just, without having a chance to sleep.
And I did bring it up just for discussion, I, I don't.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm not trying to.
Do we, do we sleep on that part of it and come back in two weeks to?
You could talk about that at a later date, but I do think you need to go ahead and approve, if you, if you're inclined to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Randy. I mean, it's infrastructure reconstruction and the lake is using the infrastructure, right? So I don't know why they would not be part of the infrastructure reconstruction.
Right, I mean, the, the district contract was written th- that way to help protect, uh, to be able to facilitate those infrastructure advances, um, and.
I mean, if our treatment plant goes down, or, or, yeah, then, the only difference, I, one thing I remember, we talked about before, is I, I personally don't like to see the three percent rate increase this year with adding the reconstruction fee. But I don't know, that's just.
I don't think you can handle it. Yeah, your budget will not be able to handle it because of the, um, all of the needs that we have to do. So I would strongly encourage you to do the three percent.
Yeah.
Plus the ten.
Plus the ten, yes. That's what your budget was built on.
I, if we can bring it back, I, I, I move, we approve the sewer service, that's where we are, right? Sewer ser-, no.
Sewer.
Work order exists, so. And, and then bring back the future date, the discussion, ten dollars for the lake, is that, you guys will pay it out or you wanna do it now?
Well, my, my question would be is if the city's making an ordinance based off of our infrastructure needs and moving forward with our sewer, how would that not be separate, or how would that not be talking about the same issue and apply directly as soon as we approve this ordinance? Uh, I just wanna make that clear, that's how I feel about it. I think that, um, we're making this decision based on the betterment of the city and the city infrastructure. It's, it's not a happy decision for anyone. Um, it's just a decision that needs to be made. I, I, I don't, I, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna second that, only.
You, it sounds like the discussion's ongoing. I'll just withdraw my motion, you guys can talk about it. Cause I agree, I mean, I agree, I think, I think in all fairness, it should be applied to all the sewer viewers, lake and city together, but.
So are you gonna make a new motion?
I'd make the motion to approve ordinance thirty-five ninety-six moving forward. I, and I think that that's a blanket statement, that it applies to all of our infrastructure and all of our sewer bills. Am I wrong with that? Bob? Okay.
So approving this will automatically add the ten dollars to the lake users?
Correct. As read in their contract.
That's pretty funny.
Well, you gotta think about it too, the county approved it. So, yeah, they've already worked at all this stuff too, because technically they're taxpayers. Cause we don't need tax money at all.
Okay, thinking about what you said.
We, we don't get any tax money from those folks at all.
Right.
Hmm, you get some.
The county who is collecting taxes for those houses out there, those are their constituents, and they probably didn't have a problem with passing this.
Okay.
Bob, I would, I would disagree though, when you say you don't get any tax from the people at the lake. You get taxed for people at the lake, maybe not property tax, or not. What you get?
Is there a second?
Okay.
Was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Lindsey Watts.
Uh, yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
No.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. Consideration of stormwater user charge increase, ordinance thirty-five ninety-seven.
And again, this is another one that we discussed with the three percent increase, and, um, that's how the budget was built. Um, we are also doing an internal audit of our customers, uh, to see if they are actually on the right step. Um, I think that has been, it should've been done a long time ago, um, but that is currently in the process, and it will take a long process to, to complete that. But, um, again, this is a three percent increase, and, um, each year they're.
How's that, how's that process being done?
Um, currently, we are collecting all the data, um, doing, first, we're doing just a manual review to see if we see, um, maybe a commercial user that's not maybe in the right category. And then the second process will be to go to a GIS map and, um, actually, um, measure.
Will this be changed if, if something's found, or are you gonna wait and do a blanket?
No, we'll just change them. So if it's significant, we'll, we'll notify the customer so that they understand what's, what's going on.
Well, a, a, a three percent, uh, increase of four dollars and eighty-four cents a month, uh, is not very much. And that's hardly even worth the effort. It, what's that, twelve cents per customer? I, I don't see the, the reasoning of a three percent increase, uh, on the stormwater. It just doesn't make sense.
Is, is this what you budgeted?
Are you saying, are you trying to say it's not enough, or?
I'm sorry.
Are you saying it's not enough?
Yeah, it's not enough to handle, uh, the needs of the stormwater. Uh, the stormwater, uh, uh, funds are, uh, everything we do in stormwater is very expensive, and, uh, a, a fee of four dollars and ninety-four cents a month is not gonna get us anywhere. So we, we need to really take a realistic look at, at what we're, uh, trying to accomplish and, and make that, make that fee, uh, comparable to what it's gonna cost us. This is not even in the ballpark, nowhere, nowhere near it. This is minor league, uh, fees with a major league cost of, of doing business.
So I'm gonna ask the question, so do we know how many of these fall into what category, that's what you're trying to analyze? Do we know the impact of a three percent increase on this?
As far as.
The overall stormwater dollars that'll be generated from it?
It's not very much. I would agree with Pete.
I would agree that it's not enough to, um, it does not generate very much money in a year. It's about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Take, take five to ten years of, of collections to do one project.
Yes.
And it, it just doesn't, uh, it doesn't make sense.
But I think that's where your priorities need to be. You need to have, I mean, ser-, serious work sessions around these, these types of things. And, and we didn't get very far when we discussed this area, um, at the, that utility work session during budget time. So, um.
Do you think the audit will be significant?
No, I do not. I think there's a handful.
Is this something that we need to look at? Is this something that we need to look at with the priorities that the city has going into the next year? I, I don't disagree that we absolutely have stormwater needs that, uh, far outweigh our pocketbook at this moment. But we also have how many road, street, and other infrastructure projects that we have going on, um, with a limited staff. Is this something that we need to look at, uh, an extreme significant increase this year? Or is this something that, once we look at how projects, if projects can move along in the next two years, look at doing a more significant increase in the next couple of years?
Sorry, I have to share with you. I, I, I really strongly feel that, um, there needs to be a better rate assessment then. Um, I do not feel like that it was, um, what we needed as a, as a city. Um, the data that was collected, um, there was not a true, a very good analysis done. Um, the data that was collected, um, there was not a true, a very good analysis done, um, in my opinion. Um, a lot of the stuff I went back after it was presented to us, and I feel like it was just kind of a blanket, um, conversation around it and what, what you would have to do to generate enough money to do the projects that you wanted to do. I think that's the wrong way of looking at this. I think we need to look at what it's costing us to run our system. And that was not done. Um, and I think Michael would agree with me on that. We, in order to really look at what it takes to process our water or our sewage, and then also the lines that need to be repaired, that was not done. And so maybe you take the next year to, to hire somebody that can really dig into the numbers, because, um, I don't think that was collectively accomplished.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I, I know that two years ago, Michael made the statement that, uh, we've got twenty-one million dollars worth of s- sewer linings to do with a, uh, a budget of three hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, so we're looking at seventy years. That's not feasible, but that's, that's the rate we're going. So our needs far outweigh, uh, our source of income. Uh, so that's, that's a huge problem that City of Fort Scott right now has.
So Pete, do you have a recommendation at a level you'd like to change this from three percent to?
Well, uh, e- even if you double it, it's, it's still only ten dollars a month. See, I'm, I'm, I'm saying we're way, way, way behind.
Well, but you're only looking at the three thousand, uh, cubic yard square foot usage. I mean, but anything's better than nothing, so if you were to, if we were to, as a whole, uh, to analyze this process using a new company specifically to give us more beneficial data, and that if we chose at this time to use the six percent, and then we could reevaluate this next year moving forward, because I clearly hear you saying it's not enough. I mean, if you wanna pick a number and say seven, eight, nine, ten percent, that's your choice. I'm just asking, uh, on behalf of the mayor and on behalf of the city, cause I agree with you, the, the structure, the infrastructure needs much work. So after being here and seeing it, I agree with you.
We're looking at doing a million dollars worth of, of storm sewer work the coming year, and we're gonna generate how much, three hundred, two hundred thousand?
Yeah, but I, uh, we have, um, money in reserves and, um, with that infrastructure plan that I had presented a couple of months back, and I think we're gonna revisit. Um, we kind of address how we can still do some of those projects, um, through some, some borrowing, but also through using reserves. And then you also have access to some of your ARPA funding. And so I think there's a way that we can still move with progress in, in some of these projects, but future, looking forward, we need to do a very good analysis of our rate structure. I do not think we are, we have set ourselves well to, um, to do projects in the future. On all, all three utilities, to be quite honest.
Well, Mark, if you're looking for, for a number, then I would, I would suggest, um, y- you know, a, a hundred percent increase would, would still wouldn't, wouldn't even be in the ballpark. Uh, you know, and, you know, a hundred percent increase, uh, is, uh, is relative. Uh, so, you know, you just gotta pick a number. You gotta say, you know, I know that's three, three percent's not gonna get us anywhere. That's hardly even worth the paperwork to do it. Uh, so, you know, we've got to, we've got to be realistic about what we're gonna cost, but we also have to be realis- realistic about what the people are gonna pay. Uh, so, you know, that's, that, that's a question that, that we all need to address and say, what do we wanna do? And that's one of many, many questions that we have.
Can I recommend an exercise that possibly you go ahead and approve this ordinance, cause that's what you budgeted for? Um, but then, uh, first of the year, you really talk about, um, your stormwater utility. Um, some ordinances need to be created anyway around the stormwater utility and what your focus and, um, uh, future is for that utility. And I think maybe as you're creating those ordinances, that will help answer the question of what your rate structure needs to be. And you can really analyze, um, some of the plans that have already been completed, um, use those as your, your starting point. Um, and I think, hmm, I think we just got notified that our stormwater, uh, plan is outdated, and so it needs to be updated. So that, that just brings this conversation even more, more to the surface. That's by, through the state, that we were required to do that.
I would make the motion that we go ahead and move forward with ordinance number thirty-five ninety-seven, um, and direct ask direction from staff to move forward with, um, especially in the new year. Um, a full-blown analysis of how all of our rate structures should be and moving forward. Yeah.
Second.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Well, I would say yes, if we, if we definitely, in our, after the first of the year, we s- we get a real, uh, stormwater, uh, ordinance set up and with realistic numbers.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Uh, yes. All right, next consideration to pay Skitch's hauling and excavation.
What?
I'm gonna need it with all the sewer rates. I'm assuming Susan looked over the bill and everything?
Yeah, um, there is one thing that, um, I noted, uh, for the last year, and this is totally my, my mistake. There should have been an adjustment made for dumping fees, and I've contacted, um, his secretary to let him know that, what we'd agreed upon as far as dumping fees, and so she has been, she's been billed for those dumping fees, and, um, we plan to get reimbursed for that. And then moving forward, they will include those on the bills, so that was totally my oversight, um, but I did think about that, um, last week, so we billed them for about a thousand dollars.
So everything good to go on this invoice? All right, I'll make the motion, um, to pay Skitch's hauling and excavation for the porta potty for October.
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes.
Can I, can I raise an issue?
Glad you wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Um, as, as it relates to this bill, and again, I, I wish Skitch was back, you know, cause this is, this was a bid bill, it's absolutely legitimate, it's our lowest bid, so this has nothing to do with this. Uh, except that, a- a- at, at our lowest bid, we're still paying someplace between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars a year, uh, for porta potties, and so I wonder if, I mean, that's like, you know, three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year timeframe, if we as a city shouldn't be looking, uh, to build, uh, toilets at whatever, use a mix of, of, uh, porta potties and permanent, permanent facilities, but we need to perform on that, see what the initial cost is, what the maintenance cost is, and so on. But I would ask Mark or Susan or somebody to look into that and see.
I agree, but I think something that very heavily needs to be taken into account is all of our parks that don't get maintenance on a regular basis that we have had issues with over the last couple of years. Like, if, if we're going to move forward with that, then there needs to be very clear-cut lines as to.
What are we talking about, forgetting?
Um, bathrooms in porta potties. A- and one thing that I, um, Randy had come to talk to me about this this week, and part of the reason why, um, those are, our facilities had not been updated is funding. And with the sales tax, um, that is one of the high priorities for the Parks Board is to update our facilities. And so we can move away from, um, the porta potties. Um, but that, that, again, you have to wait until the funds get in, and they're not, we don't quite have enough money to, to do, um, for just one, uh, holding station. Doug's not here. But at the last Parks Board, um, one, one holding station was gonna cost about forty thousand dollars to do it right. And so, um, this is something that has to be really planned out and looked at as well.
Yeah, and obviously there's gonna be places where we still need porta potties, and it's a good service, so, but before you came in, Skitch, I said, this is bid, it's absolutely our lowest bid, everything was fine, just that it's like three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a ten-year timeframe that seemed like we, if we had our own facilities, it may or may not be more cost-effective for the city. So that's what I said.
He was there for a long time before me.
All right.
Well, again, uh, that's why this awkward conversation had nothing to do with who's bidding or who's doing it right now, it just has to do with the concept of the whole thing.
All right. J, request to pay American Wrecking Service LLC thirty-seven thousand one twenty-five. So Jason, I'm assuming this is just, um, work completed?
Yeah, just, uh, final, final billing.
Did you have, uh, I had a couple of questions when you're talking about final payment on that. One of the things that I called, um, the city manager about was compaction, and you guys had ran compaction tests on it?
Correct. I provided those to the city, so every, uh, any, any test that didn't pass was, was taken out. The, the soil was taken out and reworked and replaced and retested, so that happened on a couple of spots, so that's in the record as well.
The seven thousand less from our, our previous agenda had forty-four thousand, this is thirty-seven.
Yeah, I think, I didn't have the original pay request from initial payment, so.
We caught that as we were, as we were looking through the bills, we caught that, and so I called Carl and let him know that it was, um, you had to be less, that we'd already paid that money.
And I think he sent you a, a corrected invoice.
And I just, I just, I've done a lot of dirt work, and I've never been able to catch that kind of compaction with a dozer. Ten foot, I mean, there's ten foot of dirt.
It's, it was a, it's some effort.
So there's no, there was no water added, there was not a, a compaction piece of equipment used?
Part of the deal, I think, as he was getting his stockpile, you know, sometimes it was wetter than others, so he had to mix and, and work that out at his borrow area, so he ultimately did a good job.
But there was no, as far as a compaction piece of equipment, there was none used on the job?
Nope, not as, as a standard piece of equipment, no. But it's just like taking, you know, if you do a, the lowest compaction that the state requires, you can achieve that with just rolling rubber tires over it on a dump truck, so.
I understand.
And somewhere from there to, you know, the ultimate, you know, ninety-eight percent compaction would have taken some more effort and probably some different equipment.
I just know that lot's gonna be probably sought after to build on or to be used, and, you know, I've, I've seen other lots in town, previous years, that the buildings, they just crumbed them into the, into the hole with no compaction, no nothing, and I was hoping, I was, I was really hoping to see equipment on there that was, you know, compaction equipment such as sheep's foot, rubber tire roller, something like that, but I didn't see it, so, uh, you know.
Yeah, and he actually, I was able to see, I can't remember what day it was, it might have been late Friday, or one of the da- days it was getting late, and I was heading up north, so I stopped by, and they had, actually, when they're bringing their dirt, he would actually have his dump trucks.
Sure.
Drive.
But they couldn't do that when there was a foot in there, right?
So not at the beginning, no. So once he got.
So I'm saying, when we, what were, what were the, what were the lifts? What did we call for on the lifts?
Uh, I'm trying to think, maximum was eight or nine inches, standard.
So they weren't dump truck rolling with eight or nine inches in there?
No, yeah, the first couple lifts because of reflective support from that concrete floor, so I think the second lift was when he did his first test, so.
Are, are you certifying the, the compaction requirements from that?
Yep.
So.
That'll be on the file?
So that means if somebody was to build on it in the future and it failed, and you got the testing to prove that.
So ultimately, yeah, so for that compaction, that was put in, and ninety-five percent compaction for that soil, it was tested and certified, it's good to go. But still, if anyone builds a structure there, any engineer would recommend a geotech. Do their borings and certify an actual structure being built. Cause even if it's next year or ten years down the road, you know, that's still, standard practice would still be to get that soil checked at that time and, and do that, uh, design accordingly, so.
So you're just looking for a motion to pay American Wrecking Service then, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
I'm staying.
Josh Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jason. Um, K, publication of budget amendment.
Um, at the end of each year, I always do projections and look at where we are versus, um, uh, cash that's, that's come in, or when the budget's created, for, so like, for this year's budget, it was created last July, and so, um, if we have revenues that are, that come in, or our cash carryovers are better than expected, sometimes we need to allow for, uh, more budget authority. So that's what this is doing, it is providing more budget authority for these specific funds. Um, one of them being special streets and highways, um, special parks and recreation, the conventions and Vis- Visitors Bureau, um, water utility, and then also our wastewater utility. And so, um, the, uh, this is just calling for a budget hearing to amend the budget. Um, I'd be more than happy to go over where the numbers are, um, why they are, um, changing.
If you could just real quick run through that on this.
Sure. So special streets and highways, um.
Well, are we going that tight? No, it'd be one towards the very back. Towards.
Susan, all they, all they. She was gonna wait till the other. So special streets and highways, um, the adopted twenty-twenty-one budget was seven hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty, and we are increasing that to one point three million. Um, and that is merely because our carryover was a lot higher. Um, we do not anticipate to spend that much. Um, but in the event that you wanted to sign a contract for work or anything before the end of the year, this allows for that, even if it's just engineering. And so I always take whatever revenue we actually have to date and allow for that budget amendment. Um, again, it doesn't mean that we're gonna spend that much. To date, we have spent nine hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And so, um, again, you'll see that this is about four hundred thousand dollars more than what, um, and that is because our carryover was a lot higher. And part of that's because some of the projects that we had planned on doing last year didn't get completed, and so those dollars just carry over to the next year. Any questions on special streets? Special parks and recreation, same situation, um, we had a better cash carryover than anticipated. Um, the budget was eighteen thousand three sixty-two, but we carried over forty-four thousand dollars, and so we're just increasing our budget to fifty-seven thousand. Uh, year-to-date expenditures are twenty-two thousand seven hundred dollars there, um, you know, so if you wanted to, uh, do a project before the end of the year, or buy a piece of equipment, um, this would give you the authority to do that. Conventions Visitors Bureau, um, that was ballparked very low, and that was because the industry was down, and so, um, our numbers have gone way up, which is great, um, that we're seeing as rebound. Um, our carryover was higher than expected, um, we carried over twenty-one thousand dollars, and so year-to-date expenses are sixty-seven thousand two thirty-nine. But we are in the process of hiring a part-time person to help out in that area, um, as well as there's some advertising that needs to be completed, so, um, we're asking for an increase in that fund as well. Water utility, the carryover was a lot higher than expected. Um, expected carryover was seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, and we carried over one point one million. And so we are adjusting for that, um, as well as there's an increase in collections, and we have about five hundred thousand dollars left to spend in this fund. And, um, I plan after the infrastructure conversation that you will have contracts coming to you for water projects, and so this allows for the expenditures, um, to be booked for those, um, engineering costs. And that is increasing from three million, um, to three point three million. Wastewater utility is a little bit different situation. Um, carryover was. Wastewater utility is a little bit different situation. Carryover was actually down, but our expenditures are up due to some emergency repairs and some engineering contracts for projects. We still have a good, healthy cash balance, but I just want to make sure that we have enough budget authority for the end of the year. So that's all the different funds and, and the explanation.
On the convention seat, are we, is that part-time a new position?
Um, yes. It is. The person has been hired, but due to some health situations with her husband, she has not started yet.
And her title will be?
Administrative assistant.
And so is this coming out of, this ain't coming out of the heads and beds tax?
Part of it is, but not all of it. So it's, it's, it's split duties. But there has been an assistant there in the past in the CBB.
I just, I knew there's been talks in the past about that money. And so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no. We've apportioned it according to how the person will be utilized. So this is just setting a budget hearing.
Move to set the budget hearing.
Second.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Watts? Josh Jones?
Yes.
All right. Reports and comments, interim city manager comments.
Good evening, commissioners. Item A, first item on there is Christmas dinner. We have tentatively scheduled December sixth for our employee Christmas dinner. All of you are invited and your guest or spouse. And that will be at six P M. At Buck Run Community Center. At, we, we, next item is turkeys and we will be distributing turkeys this Thursday between three thirty and five thirty. We have purchased turkeys to benefit our, all of our employees that are full time and they will be receiving a turkey this Thursday between three thirty and five thirty. Uh, the next item on there is a discussion of removal of bridge. In your packet, there are pictures.
Oh, you skipped one.
I skipped, what I skipped, what I, what, 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 Christmas bonus. I'm sorry.
And that is a request.
The bridge will be the Christmas bonus. Anybody, just kidding. The Christmas bonus is grossed up. So all full-time employees will be receiving a one hundred dollar Christmas bonus. And that will be, uh, what's the right term here? Grossed up, which means that they will actually receive a full hundred dollars.
But that needs to be voted on upon the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Now, part-time will receive twenty five dollars grossed up.
Is this in line with last year's?
Yes.
So I would ask that you would approve that.
How many employees do we have, Mark? Full-time?
Thank you, Brad. Ninety-six.
You need a motion to approve that?
And how many part-time?
I know this is off subject, but ARPA money for the bonus for the, let me think about that. Did they get the bonus for the public safety?
Yeah.
That we approved? No?
Nope.
Moving on. Okay, sorry. Just made me think about it.
Did we, did we vote on that?
Maybe not. I thought we did.
On what? ARPA, public safety increase? No. So we'll go back and review the minutes. You go back and review your minutes, but I don't think there was ever a, I think it was just discussion.
Would you like that placed on the next agenda, Mayor?
I would.
Okay. We'll have that placed on the next agenda. So, but tonight I'm asking you for a, a vote for the Christmas bonuses.
Move to for the Christmas bonuses is recommended.
Did you have something, Kevin?
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have anything for say, cause I don't want to offend any of the employees or anything like that. And this is typically something we do every year. It's just, you know, I, I don't know. Again, we talked about, and, and I'd seen it in there. We talked about having a couple of weeks to go over, but it's fifteen thousand dollars in total.
It's actually less than that.
It's ten thousand for the bonuses. And by the time you put turkeys in there.
Oh.
It's another four thousand dollars for the turkeys. So it's just, yeah.
Second.
Lindsay Watts?
Yes.
Pete Allen?
Yes.
Randy Nichols?
Yes.
Kevin Allen?
Yes.
Josh Jones?
Yes. The next item on there is discussion for removal of bridge. This has come up in the past. And so in your packet are three different pictures, I'm sorry, four different pictures. And I think the last one really shows it best. Uh, this, this bridge has collapsed. It is, it is in the riverway and it needs to be removed. So we would like to ask you about the options of how you would like it removed. And then we will either go out for, for bid or we can try to secure, someone made a suggestion. We try to get the National Guard.
And we've actually talked to them. They don't think that they can do that exercise. They don't think they have the equipment to do it. And they, it's going to get a final this week. But in the event that they could, all they'll do is pull it out. So that, that's an option, but we don't think it's a very viable option.
So their conversations in the past were would someone take it out, A, and charge us, B, take it out? And, and then they would not charge us because they would reclaim all of the items that they could. There's metal there, steel, iron. Is it our bridge?
Yes.
So if we think that.
I mean, me personally, I mean, this would be a, this would be a good winter project for the employees. I don't, I don't see a problem with taking. I mean, we have all the equipment to take that out. We have the, that excavator that would reach down in there and pull that out, cut it up, take it to salvage yard. We would gain all the money off the scrap. I mean, that's just a no-brainer to me. If it was mine, I would love to have that. I mean, any, anybody would love to have that and take it to the scrapyard. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah. I just, I mean, I don't know on our employees if it's something that we can handle. We have a lot of winter projects.
Sure.
So, but yeah, no, I agree that it's definitely something the city can do.
I mean, if it's a hindrance in the river, it wouldn't take, that thing's all connected from what I can see. So you take the hoe down there and wrap some chains around it and you pull it up on the bank and you can leave it there till you catch a good rainy day when you can't work and you go down and you take some torches and you blow it apart and you take it to the scrapyard.
Is there a road down to it?
I think you come in from the backside, the mid, midwestern. And there's a road right to it on the other side. It's right down there. If you go down towards the old Gold Star Trailer Building, right back there, we just put the new, the clean out, the, the trailer clean out, it's down in there. You would access it. You could probably come in from Twister Trailer. Am I right, Mark? Is that how you guys are viewing it? Have you been down there?
No, Skits, you haven't taken me on that tour that we, we talked about. You won't pay for the gas.
We, that we talked about.
We didn't talk about paying for gas. However, if that's the problem, then we could probably procure a city four-wheel drive truck if necessary.
Yeah, I think what's happening.
You have a CDL?
No. Anyway, so I think what's happened is on either side of that, you're going to be able to access it. So I, I think, I would like to go down and look at that, but I think that it would, it would pay to have city equipment, pull that up out of there. And we can make a, the scrap value off of it.
Is that something that you, an avenue you've already looked at?
It is, it has not. And I, I, no one's asked me for my opinion, so.
I, I would like to know your opinion.
Oh, thank you. Honestly, thank you. I, with the staff we have, I do not believe with all the projects that need to be done, that this is a project that they have the time or the capability to do. And, and I will throw that into a project that just recently took place that we didn't properly discuss, review thoroughly, engineer. And I, I, I'm afraid that this will become another one of those projects that seems easy peasy to, to some people, but not to others. And I'm not criticizing anybody in the room. I'm just saying, I, I believe this is something best done by someone else that we could contract. Now, that, that's my opinion. And like, for example, again, in the last two weeks, Brad could help me with this. We've had two employees out on public works with COVID and another one is going to be off for five days, excuse me, two days to attend a funeral. So th- these are the real, realistic issues dealing with employees each and every day. And so I'm, I'm stating the facts and I do not believe that we have enough staff to do this. What, what's your suggestion then? I would like to see, even though, you, so you said that the, the, I'm sorry, the military's not able to do it. So I think we should go out to bid on this.
So can we bid it for, for the scrap, scrap? Or how, how are you going to bid it?
Well, that's what we're asking you. Do you, do you want someone to, you want it bid two ways? Do you want it bid where they would take it, they would remove it and then they would collect all of the profits, I'll call it, from removing it? Or would we just pay them X dollars to remove it?
I can't hear it, sir.
Yeah.
I think it would be hard to bid that way because you wouldn't pay anything. I don't know how you would bid that.
Yeah, I think you just go out for requests or proposals.
And see who's got the best plan.
They take the scrap value. I mean, I would think.
But what are you going to analyze? I mean, it's, it's a tough one to, to know how to bid this.
Well, I mean, I think some will come in maybe paying us a little bit even, possibly. So I would just take requests for proposals and just make it where they get to keep the scrap value. So we don't have to then go in and digging in like, how much did you get? And so they know they're getting full scrap value. They can estimate it. And then they can decide whether they're going to try charging us or pay us. I think the scrappers out there know the value. So I think they'll come in with, hey, we'll pay you or X amount. So.
I just, I guess I, I think about this in different ways. You know, when we, we was looking at a project here a month ago, talking about a local plumbing company, doing a project on this lot we just had. And we thought we could save some money by hauling our own gravel. And, you know, cut a local contractor out of hauling gravel in there. And, and that ended up costing us, what'd we, what'd we spend? Probably four thousand dollars in rock?
Well, I will say the difference is we haul gravel every day. We don't pull bridges out of rivers every day.
Okay.
So that, that's, I mean, that would just be my rebuttal to that. So.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just, I mean, you guys can do what you want. I just know that in my mind, if the city was going to, if the city was going to make the best, be the best steward of the money, I think that they could get some scrap value out of that.
I, what, what would the commission like me to do?
Was there a motion?
No.
No, I, I would make the motion that we go out to bid and, and give the option, leaving that, or go out to, per proposal on the project. I'd just say, I, I don't disagree with any of the arguments. I think the biggest thing that we need to take into account is there have been a lot of decisions made over the past two years that we don't take all of the pieces into account and then we aren't capable of finishing projects or we're not capable of doing them the way that we felt like it would be easy to do. So having this information in front of us, I think in the meantime, we can also look at if we are capable, if you do talk to staff and we are capable of, of doing this ourselves, then that's a different discussion that we can have at that time. But I don't think burdening our staff with saying this has to be done or this needs to get, get accomplished and it's put at the bottom of the pile. And then it just looks like one more thing that they're not capable of doing, which isn't the case. They're very low on staff and capability at this moment.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Kevin. I mean, we can definitely probably make somebody do it cheaper, but I also hear Mark saying, if you don't, if we don't have confidence in the staff to do it or enough to do it, then no sense putting more on their plate and, and doing it. So.
If I may, I'd, I'd like to address that staff situation. Is this a precedent that we're going to have for the next year, year and a half, two years, three years? Are we ever going to have sufficient personnel to do the, to do the, and, and I guess this is a question that, that Brad could probably bring us up to date.
He's already got you a handout for it.
So I think Brad has some really good points on this and I will elaborate after Brad comments.
Pete, I'll tell you what, recruiting is my job every day.
Yes.
Looking for the right people that can come in and do whatever you want us to do. But if you just take a gander down the street, every place there is now hiring, looking for help, da, 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 da. It's everywhere. We, we don't have abundance of applications coming in. So what we have to do is be strategic on trying to write and find the people. And like I said, every day I'm doing that. You can look at it, in the last three months, we've hired almost ten to eleven people. And the people we have got are very qualified to do anything. You know, we've, we've hired two people that have a lot of equipment operating experience. That has helped our staff. Of course, with that, we have to look at funding also. We have to look at the budget. So to get those high qualified people, we have to figure out where we're going to cut somewhere else. And that just takes money away from somebody else. So to answer your question, yes. I mean, it's, it's a, something that I brought when I came here, was experience to go out and find people. And right now, I feel we have done that. We've got a gentleman starting tomorrow, ironically, that is an equipment operator. That brings a lot of experience to the table that can do a lot of equipment operating. Uh, we hired another gentleman a couple of months back that has tons of equipment operating. He used to work with me when I worked for the water department back in the early nineties. So we're getting some good people. It's just not a ton of people that's knocking down the door to come work for not only the city, because I still say this is one of the best jobs in Fort Scott, but peerless extrusions, Lab Conco. Skitch has an ad every day. It seems like you need CDL drivers. Well, we need CDL drivers. So, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's a focus that I have, but it takes time. It, it really does.
Well, Brad, I, I noticed in the budget worksheets that we're projecting three hundred and thirty thousand dollars payroll for public works for twenty twenty-two. Uh, to me, that equals ten thirty thousand dollar a year people. And that's about what it's going to take to do the maintenance work that needs to be done in the city of Fort Scott for twenty twenty-two. Now, are we going to be able to put those ten people on the, on the plate for us to, to use? And that's not robbing anybody. That's, that's what's in the budget is that three hundred and thirty thousand for payroll.
I'll go back again. You know how to run equipment. He knows how to run equipment. Does he know how to run equipment? Does he know how? We want to get people in here that can help us immediately. And of course, we do want some people in here that want to grow with us. But that budget and Susan can help me with this because I go to her every day when we talk about bringing somebody in. You know, does that three hundred thousand, Susan, count the people we already have or is that?
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if that's ten people because you have bosses making more. You, I mean, but, yeah.
That would be fully staffed.
I would love to find at least two more right now. I mean, that would probably be really happy. So you find at least two more. But yes, I agree, Pete. I mean, we need people. We need good people. We need people that want to grow with us. Because that's one thing Mark and I and Susan have talked about that we have really focused with the managers is having that top-notch operator is great. But that top-notch operator in a few years may get ready to retire from us. We need somebody down at the bottom that want to grow with us. And those are the types that we're not getting in. We want people that can grow.
Well, to me, that's a, that's a goal, a goal that Susan has set for ten people. And, and that's how we have to look at what we're going to get done next year. Or are we going to have to hire out? Or are we gonna have to hire out our maintenance? You know, if we can't do it ourself, then here again, we're talking about pulling a bridge out of the river. We're saying we don't have enough people to do it, and we're talking about hiring it out. Now, are we gonna end up hiring out our street sweeping? Are we gonna end up hiring out our ceiling? Are we gonna end up hiring out our crack filling?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I mean, this subject is a whole work session on its own, but I would say, I would say case-by-case scenario. If we don't have a street sweeper, and the roads need sweep, and we can't find the one to work that, then that's something we'd have to look at, is hiring it out to be done by a private contractor. So, I think case-by-case scenario, and like Brad said, it's hard to find employees right now. And so, that's the way I look at it, is case-by-case, you know, at this point, we don't have enough people. But, yeah, I mean, like you said, that's a whole subject that everyone across the country's having problems with, so...
Yes.
You ready for a vote?
Yes.
This was to go out, this was to go out for RFPs to remove the bridge. Kevin Allen.
Obstain.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, Brad. All right, municipal court expansion. Mark, were you done?
I, thank you, Brad, yes, yes. The prognosis going forward for the workforce is not truly optimistic.
That's what I thought.
I wanted to answer that before I moved on. What was the next thing you asked me to cover, Mayor?
Municipal court is what you had to do.
Municipal court. So, I have met with Diane, and there are still a number of processes that are not in place yet. We have two electronic communicating systems that don't seem to be able to communicate with each other efficiently. And technology's great when it works, and when it doesn't, it slows the system down. We are working diligently to get this, these two systems to communicate with each other. And so, I have set a target of the second Thursday in January to be our go-live date. I think if we don't have a target, then we have nothing to shoot for.
If you put that on the second Tuesday's agenda, January?
Second Tuesdays in January.
This is a follow-up. You said the second Thursday, right?
Yes. I don't know if we're meeting the second Tuesday in January.
I'm sorry, third, the second meeting in January.
Oh, okay. Yes. And we'll continue to keep you updated. I mean, I, I think that this is something what we really need to do, and no one's trying to not do it.
Well, the reason I ask you, we've talked before about bringing stuff up and forgetting about it, so that way, we don't forget about you as part of it.
I'm glad you did, Mayor.
Lindsay Madison brought to my attention, your next meeting is the same night as the Christmas parade, December 7th. And she would like approval for you guys to move the parade up some. I know you have a public hearing, or the commission meeting.
Can't we just move the meeting to Monday or something?
You have two public hearings.
No, you can't. Once they're published, you can't. There are certain... Mine's not published, but what's the other one?
The other one's the public hearing for the neighborhood revitalization.
And the one of them hasn't been published yet, so you can change the time, make a motion to change the time for those to 5:00 instead of 6:00.
Well, when would we move?
What time's the parade start, Lindsay? Would we wanna start the meeting that night at 6:30? 7:00? I mean, by the time the parade goes by the front here, we're all standing out front, that we could all start the meeting at 6:30, nothing, 6:45.
Wait, you guys would do a meeting in an hour, go out to the... What, do you laugh?
I do.
You can do it in an hour.
Yes, you can do it in an hour. Do you want to?
Worst case scenario is we pause it and resume after the...
Excellent point, excellent point, because I was planning, honestly, I was planning on being in the parade. So, I, that's not a joke, it's a very...
So, you're asking to move the meeting up till 5:00 PM?
Yes, and then we would break for the parade.
So, do we need a motion to move that, or just a motion for the public hearings?
You're still gonna have to change your times in the public hearings.
I want to change it to the dawn.
So, we need to make a motion to do that?
I would.
Yes, you've already approved it.
So, what do we wanna change it to?
It's two different things. Change the meeting to start time to 5:00 PM, and then change the public hearing session to 7:00.
I moved it to December 7.
5:00, I'm sorry.
How long are you gonna parade?
26 and a half minutes. It's a secret, and I'm not Santa Claus.
So, I mentioned to Diane, we usually work together in some of the actual written form. But, I was going to a conference last week, and also, Christmas really snuck up on me, but it's, the parade's getting up really quickly. But, I had talked to Travis, so we were offside, thinking that maybe this needed to go ahead and be approved while you're having this discussion, because the parade might not end in 27 minutes, because we were looking at doing a longer route this year, which I had talked to Travis about, and he had approved, or not, he had said he thought it would work. So, the parade might be a little, last a little bit longer, but we were looking at, so at the appropriate time, it's time I can stand up and get this approved, maybe while you all are here. I wanted to tell you the proposed route, but this might not be...
No, I'd say go ahead if you need to approve tonight, so...
Okay. So, we were, my thought is just, a lot of people go to work, a lot of work on their Christmas entries and floats and whatnot, just for like a three-block parade. We usually start in front of Carriage House and end down at the mayor's Christmas tree. So, it's literally like a four-block parade. So, I was maybe wanting to try a little bit longer route, so people that go to all that work and get out for the parade have a little bit longer display of their entry. So, we're looking at starting the lineup in front of the radio station. And so, it would be marked off going north from the radio station. And so, the parade would go from Third, or Wall and National, in front of E3, pass down to Memorial Hall, turn left to the Carriage House, and then go north and end at the mayor's Christmas tree. So, just a little bit longer route, and Travis said he thought that would work, and that he thought we'd maybe even done that one time in the past for a different parade, so... So, I just wanna, while you're talking about the time, because it usually is just literally like a four-block parade, but it might last a little longer if we do the longer...
I was really sad reading about this route a couple of years ago, whenever I made my hand-painted Santa on the front of our building downtown.
You didn't save that?
So, do we need a motion to close off the streets?
Yes.
All right. What time do you need to close for?
From 5:00 to... From 5:00 to 7:00?
All right, so I'll make that motion to close off the parade route from 5:00 to 7:00 on...
Second.
We've got one other open motion.
Oh.
Lindsay moved to change the time of the meeting to 5:00 PM.
I didn't know she did that.
And that was number 2.
I did.
Oh, sorry. The meeting and the public...
We get one at a time.
Yeah, second.
What time are you staging the parade?
People usually start lining up around 5:00, or 5:15. I mean, the spaces will be marked off that day, but people usually line up between 5:00 and 6:00. It just depends how loud their entry is.
I second Lindsay's motion.
So, you changed the time of the parade and the publication of the public hearings? Time of the meeting, sorry, not the time of the parade, sorry. Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
All right, and I would make the motion that we change the two public hearings to 5:00 PM on December 7th. Oh, you did?
It's okay.
Was that, oh, I thought they had to be further.
You wanna make a motion to approve the parade permit and the route?
Yes, I will make the motion to approve the parade permit and the route. That was a lot of... That was a lot of...
Second.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Josh Jones.
Yes.
All right, so...
Did you hit that button?
What?
Did you hit that button?
I did, it's caught back there. Work session, infrastructure?
Work sessions?
Yes. We've had many discussions in the past, but I believe that we really need to once again enter into a significant discussion, a work session on infrastructure. We brought that up earlier this evening, and I don't think anybody in here, I would hope no one in here would be opposed to that. So, I would like to propose either December 1st, or 2nd, or 3rd, which I think is a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Anybody, anybody got a calendar there? I'm getting my calendar. Okay, so, December 1st is a Wednesday, 2nd is Thursday, and the 3rd is Friday. So, I would propose a work session on any one of those three days, starting at 4:00. Or, what time would the commission like to be here?
And I'm just asking, is there a reason not to do it on the commission day, if we're gonna do it earlier?
I think it'll take much more than an hour. If you wanna have a serious meeting to talk about this and have significant information covered, or would you like to do a session of these?
No, one, so whatever day works best for everyone.
Repeat those days again for me, please.
December 1st, 2nd, or 3rd, that's a Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday, if you wanna start it. What, whatever time you'd like to, whatever time you'd like to do it?
Yeah, does any days work better?
What days are out? How about that? It's easier if you tell me when you can't do it, and I can send out a meeting notice.
I prefer it not to start before 5:30, if that's possible.
Okay, so that's good, see, starting at 5:30?
I don't know if there's any days that work better, or worse.
Not weighing in.
Randy, does any...
We'll send out a meeting invite tomorrow? Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I have a few other things down here. I am asking the police chief to come up and address us on a subject about canine.
Good evening, commission. So, our free canine that we got in July or August is not working out. Yes. He's bitten our handler twice, which has caused him to go to get medical treatment both times, so... The dog, yes. So, we contacted the agency that we received it from, they gave us a, the folks that they'd gotten the dog from, a vendor, I believe it's Indiana, to see if, you know, hey, would you give us credit? I mean, it was a free dog, so we're benefiting, you know, if we get a credit for him. They didn't necessarily want him back. The vendor that we did go through to get our dog trained, well, and our handler trained, is in Pomona, Kansas. And he had contacted us and said, look, well, our handler, Logan Woods, had called and said, hey, that we're, you know, this happened well. We can't have that anymore, and we need to get rid of this dog, and look at our other options. So, this Matt Scholar, Scollgin, called us, and he said, hey, look, he said, I've got a, I've got some folks in the Virgin Islands that would take this dog for $2,000. He said, if you wanted to, you know, go back through me, and we can go back and get a, one that's more, a breed that's more sociable, a lab, or a golden retriever that's just a sniffer, he said, we can work with you on that. Now, so, those are $11,500, but $2,000 that we didn't have before, we could put towards that, and we could take this, again, out of our drug seizure monies that, that, you know, hopefully, what I want is something more sociable, that I can get in schools and things like this, that I can get talks with, I can also little, little aid in criminal investigations as well. So, that's kinda where we're at, and that's, I just, I need permission to sell the dog, and then proceed with another avenue to get another one. And I think I wanna go with this iron heart that we've been working with as well.
So, you're asking for permission to sell the dog? Are you asking for permission to buy another dog?
Yes.
Commissioners, the money's already there, it comes out of the drug fund. And I would ask the commission to agree to chief's recommendations and suggestions. I mean, one of the things that's been brought before us, when I hear different entities talking, is we have three dogs. Do we have three dogs, like, at the county? They have, how many of the sheriffs?
The sheriff's office? Yeah, I think they have three dogs. I don't know the age, or when they're gonna be cycled out, or any of that.
Is that something we...
Well, there's one.
I think they have two, and then they, we gave them one as a third one, so...
And is that not something we should look into partnering with them? I mean, I know we got drug money to spend, that sounds weird to say, but...
You know, I think that our departments can help each other when guys are off shift, or not available. I think that, I don't think it hurts, I mean, I think it just helps both agencies having...
Yeah, I mean, I kinda agree, because I, when I kinda watch the county commission meetings, I hear the sheriff's department talk about being shorthanded and stuff like that anyway, so this might help alleviate some of that, so I don't see, I don't see a downside.
I do feel strongly about getting a more sociable animal, I mean...
Like a poodle?
Well, a lab would be finer, but...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, really, there are interdiction dogs that are beagles. It's all about the dog. It's, we don't want this dog to bite, we want him to smell and do what he does, so that we can do some drug interdiction. And in this particular case, where I'm very vocal on shared services, I do not believe that that's in the best interest of the city of Fort Scott and our police department. I mean, that's why I asked, Mark, was because we have talked about shared services, and I didn't know if that would be a...
I'll second if I get to take the dog to the Virgin Islands.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I second.
Lindsey Watts. Pete Allen.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Thanks, Travis.
No.
Second.
Right, you needed that, right, Travis? Okay.
Got you covered, Travis.
Yeah, I thought we did it all on one motion, but...
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. I would ask my distinguished gentleman to my left to distribute these for me, please. Commissioners, what's being distributed to you right now is the updated form for the Ethics and Civility Training. The date has been changed for this. It's now Wednesday, December 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. It was originally scheduled for Thursday, December 9th. This is a live webinar. The city will be paying for yourselves to observe and attend this. My recommendation is we come here, in this fine establishment, and attend here. If you do not wish to do that, this is a Zoom presentation, and you could watch it from whatever location you wish. I have also to take it upon myself to invite the two incoming commissioners, because I think that this is extremely important for them also. And I'm wanting to be in attendance for this also. So, again, this is a suggestion, a recommendation. I think that this is nothing but positive reinforcement information, and I highly encourage you to be here and attend it. The next item on the agenda...
I'm sorry, Mark, do we need to preregister? So, whoever's coming needs to let you know, because you gotta pay for it?
Yes, absolutely. And if you wanna confirm that with Diane, so, it does talk about preregistration. Registering for the webinar is at this address?
By December 3rd.
Yeah, by December 3rd.
But it's all gonna be in one room?
Doesn't have to be, again, but...
I mean, saying that if someone doesn't register, or does register, doesn't show, I mean...
Well, you have to, oh, well, so... Yeah, well, I, you know, you don't have to all be here, no. You can register, and you can be on your own. Now, if you... Yes, please come here. I'll buy you pizza. I will personally, not the city, so those that might be concerned about the city budget.
I was going to say, I wasn't going to learn how to be a better kid until you set pizza.
Yep. Cheese okay?
No. Italian sausage.
Yeah, but almost, almost, I almost fell for that, Kevin. Okay, does that conclude that?
It does. Do you need an executive session?
Mayor, I would like to ask you to go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel.
Hello?
This would include...
Second.
Okay, I'd like to include the HR director, the assistant city manager, finance director, and myself. And Bob Farmer.
For how long?
I, 10 minutes.
You want to, you want to read the verbiage? You probably ought to.
I move the city commission recessive executive session for the purpose of non-elected personnel pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, KSA City 543-19B1. The five commissioners, HR, Susan, Bob Farmer, Mark McCoy. The meeting will resume in 10 minutes in the city commission room.
Kevin Allen, Bernie Jess, Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols.
Yes.
Lindsey Watts.
Yes.
Yes.
Travis. Yes. Okay. I'd like to include the HR director, the assistant city manager, finance director, and myself. And Bob Farmer.
For how long?
I, 10 minutes.
You want to, you want to read the verbiage? You probably ought to.
I move the city commission recessive executive session for the purpose of non-elected personnel pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, KSA City 543-19B1. The five commissioners, the HR, the assistant city manager, finance director, and...
Pete?
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes. I would ask my distinguished gentleman to my left to distribute these for me, please. Commissioners, what's being distributed to you right now is the updated form for the ethics and civility training. The date has been changed for this. It's now Wednesday, December 8th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It was originally scheduled for Thursday, December 9th. This is a live webinar. The city will be paying for yourselves to observe and attend this. My recommendation is we come here, in this fine establishment, and attend here. If you do not wish to do that, this is a Zoom presentation, and you could watch it from whatever location you wish. I have also to take it upon myself to invite the two incoming commissioners, because I think that this is extremely important for them also, and I'm wanting to be in attendance for this also. So, again, this is a suggestion, a recommendation. I think that this is nothing but positive reinforcement information, and I highly encourage you to be here and attend it. The next item on the agenda...
I'm sorry, Mark, do we need to preregister, so whoever's coming needs to let you know, because you've got to pay for it?
Yes, absolutely, and if you want to confirm that with Diane. So it does talk about preregistration. Registering for the webinar is at this address?
By December 3rd.
Yeah, by December 3rd.
But it's all going to be in one room?
Doesn't have to be, again, but...
I mean, saying that if someone doesn't register, or does register, doesn't show, I mean...
Well, you have to, oh, well, so... Yeah, well, I, you know, you don't have to all be here, no. You can register, and you can, you know, on your own. Now, if you don't register, you can't, you can't enter into the Zoom call from your house by yourself. I know that was a test. Yes, please come here. I'll buy you pizza. I will personally, not the city, so those that might be concerned about the city budget.
I was going to say, I wasn't going to learn how to be a better kid until you set pizza.
Yep. Cheese okay?
No. Italian sausage.
Yeah, but almost, almost, I almost fell for that, Kevin. Okay, does that conclude that?
It does. Do you need an executive session?
Mayor, I would like to ask you to go into an executive session for the purpose of discussing non-elected personnel.
Hello?
This would include...
Second.
Okay, I'd like to include the HR director, the assistant city manager, finance director, and myself. And Bob Farmer.
For how long?
I, 10 minutes.
You want to, you want to read the verbiage? You probably ought to.
I move the city commission recessive executive session for the purpose of non-elected personnel pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, KSA City 543-19B1. The five commissioners, the HR, the assistant city manager, finance director, and...
Pete?
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts. Josh Jones.
I'm the City Commission Recess Executive Session for the Department of Homeland Security, Deputy Assistant to the TSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen. Chief One, five commissioners, HR, Office Manager, Finance Director.
Pete. For a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen. Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watts.
Yep.
Josh Jones.
Yes.
Okay.
I need the city to come back into open session.
Okay. All right, all right, all right.
I need three people.
Well, there's Pete.
Yes.
Okay. Josh?
Yes, yes. I'm going to see Commissioner Sessions in native session for a question of seventy-five point three nineteen one. Same deal as last meeting, opening will resume in fifteen minutes. Let me see, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So Kevin, Pete, Randy.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Second. Kevin Allen.
Yes.
Pete Allen.
Yes.
Randy Nichols. Lindsey Watt.
Yes.
Josh Jones.
Yes. All right, uh, let's get that one. Commissioner reports and comments. Kevin?
I have one thing I'd like to go in executive session for three minutes. I'm serious. Three minutes.
You gotta read the language.
Oh, I don't. Just, I want to take the city, I'm not, I don't know how to read all that.
Well, you gotta know what you're doing.
I'm gonna take the city commissioners and the city attorney. Like I choose one, is this like a menu?
It's non-elected personnel.
It's about. So what's that one?
About what?
I can't say what it's about.
You have to be able to tell what the subject matter someone is about in open, open meetings.
No, I'm elected. Say, well, it's the, whatever, however you say it, it's about elected personnel. Elected people.
We have to talk about that in open session.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then, thank you, Bob, for guiding on that. I wanted to, when I talk-
As long as it's not about any other business or, so I'm just making that clear if there's something that needs to go back into executive session for a corporation or-
No, I don't like to, no, just about me, my person. Okay. Oh, my. Oh, my. It's just, um, and I had the, I had Mark, uh, Mark, you were probably like, had you talk, I asked you to talk to the city attorney about a situation that I'd been in. Did you have time to do that? And undoing that situation?
I'm not recalling, I'm sorry. You have a little more to tell me?
Yeah, that fancy little year a while back censure.
Uh, no, I don't think I did.
Okay.
I would apologize right now.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I don't-
That's okay. I just, I had asked you probably two or three days ago about visiting with the city attorney about lifting. Uh, what's it called, not lifting, but you said it was called that.
Um, you, you, yes, I recall the discussion now. You would, you would like to discuss the topic of having your censure removed.
Terminated.
Terminated.
Yeah.
Yes. I did not bring that up to him, but I think that's appropriate to bring it up in open session.
How does that work?
I could be wrong.
Considering I've never been asked that question in forty-seven years.
Right. It's never happened.
How about I consider if Mark does not talk to me, and I will look at it and get back to you folks, I think we can be done. I just need to make sure.
How much time would you like, Bob?
Oh, next week.
Okay. Well, we don't meet until the seventh of December, though.
No, we can- Oh, yeah, I've been censured all year, might as well.
Right.
And another weekend go by.
Am I wrong?
Right, right.
Am I wrong, Mayor?
No, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, okay. No. Okay. Sorry. I, I-
It's okay. It's just me, no big deal.
I apologize.
Anything else? No, I think I'm good after that.
Right.
Pete? Do you have anything under commissioner comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that, uh, we did a lot here tonight, and I, I loved the presentation about the lake. Two years ago, Commissioner Allen loaded me in his truck, and he drove me around the lake, and he- And, and he, uh-